All right, we're good to start the meeting.
Okay, Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, October 27, 2021. Public comments, anybody wishing to make a public comment may do so on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anything? Or anybody, Beth?
Anybody wishing to make a public comment, use the raise your hand function. Give it a second or two. Uh, seeing no public comments and just a gentle reminder that we do need to do roll call.
Very good. Yeah, for some reason they put it above it this time. Anyways, um, very good. We will close public comment and bring it back to order, uh, call to order.
Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Winn.
Present.
Commissioner Owens.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
And I will note that's Aleta, La Micah, and Dodson are absent.
Very good. Okay. We have a quorum, so we'll move on to review of agenda items. If there's any items that arose after the 72-hour post time, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda. Two to three majority votes required. Anything, Beth?
That's for the commissioners. I don't have anything.
Okay, oh, here it is down here on my second page. I have it on my first page too, public comment. Anyway, we've already done the approval of minutes, October 13, 2021. Anybody?
Okay, I'll, I'll move, I'll move to approve, uh, a minutes from October 13, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have to, I have to abstain. I wasn't there.
Me too.
No, it's just Dave.
We approve it with just two votes?
I don't know. I, Beth, Beth, abstention would go with the motion.
Okay, let's just go ahead and extend it to the next meeting when we have all the commissioners present.
Uh, Medina said that the absent votes or the abstaining votes count towards the approval.
Okay.
Kind of an objection to it and it wasn't, no, so we're good.
Very good. So we'll move on to business items. Architectural review application number B A R 21-09, Lorraine McGruff and Alan James, property owners, and August Design and Build applicant are requesting architectural review approval for a 525 square foot second story addition and 120 square foot balcony located at 1663 Mescal Street in the RSA Single Family Residential zoning district. Staff?
Uh, Beth Rocha, senior planner, I'll be presenting this, but I'm going to ask for a couple of minutes to kind of take a brief pause because the applicant and architect for this project just contacted me letting me know that they were having issues getting on, so I'm going to resend them the link and I'll start the presentation in a couple of minutes.
Do you want us to go ahead and move on to the next one, the variance?
No, we'll wait two minutes. Okay, architectural review application, B A R 2109 for a project at 1663 Mescal Street. Cypress and, there we go. A little bit of background and just some of the existing site conditions. An existing single-story, single-family home on a 8,500 square foot parcel. Developed with a 2,005 square foot home and then attached 485 square foot two-car garage. The layout on this parcel, which is somewhat pie-shaped, a little bit of a different layout from what we typically see in Seaside. You see the walking path goes in towards an entry that is really recessed from both which on the left and the right-hand side of the bedroom and a garage. So kind of a U shape. And yeah, you can see the layout of the floor plan. With the proposal of a second story addition, there's not going to be a change to the site coverage, which the project site complies with, and as you can see highlighted in this first box outlined in red. And then the floor area will be increasing a little bit, but still in compliance with the code. The second story addition is also compliant with the code in terms of observing all the required setbacks. Topography doesn't actually have much to do with this specific site and the sites to the immediate, you know, left and right and almost also towards the back, where you see the most decline happening as you proceed down Mescal towards the intersection of Mescal and Marietta. Doesn't happen until you get a little bit beyond the subject property where you can see these lines becoming closer in terms of the topography sloping down. And then from the backyard of 1663, there's definitely significant grade change to this property at 1624, where they have a retaining wall in the back that is at least five feet tall. The butts 1618, which is a property where 1663 shares about 60% of its rear property line with. 1618 also shares in about the majority of 1653 and 1643. So they have three adjacent parcels along their rear yard where most of the time in the traditional grid, we see it being one-to-one and not that many offset. 1618, I did submit a letter regarding this project and that was included in your packet. I believe that they are here tonight to speak to that. If not, we can go over that letter in further detail as we move towards the discussion. There's some photos of the site that I took once the staking and flagging was erected. Uh, this is more taken looking towards the garage, but also showing the height increase. They're not maxing out at what the code allows at 24 feet, but they're only going to 21 feet six inches. And then the bottom photo shows the proposed addition above the portion of the structure that is primarily over, although it's more towards the rear than it is towards the front, and we'll see that on other images of the site plan. But this also shows the boundary between that and the property to its left, which also includes a lot of landscaping for issues of privacy if that were to be the case here. Couple more photos. This is taken from the backyard. You can see the staking and flagging here again, showing the height increase. Again, not maxing out on the height. Um, and then this is essentially directly across from that, which is that portion of the letter we received in their rear yard, where you can see a small accessory structure. Um, and their letter provided photographs from their point of view, which again, I can open once we get to that point. There's photos again. Uh, this is directly in front of that portion of the proposed addition, looking out towards their backyard. They have a couple of trees planted here and then you see the structures on the other side. And this is taken from Marietta, uh, where you can make out the staking and flagging there, really not having much of a visual impact above the existing roof lines of the properties on that street. So the proposed first floor plan includes a kitchen remodel and some of the organizing of these rooms in order to provide access to the second, uh, story addition. Providing this for context, just so you can see the flow going in from the entry to the living room, dining room, kitchen to the right, bar to the left, which is essentially where you have your bedrooms, a sitting room, less than 18-inch grade, above grade level deck, and then the stairs going up to what they're proposing for the second story addition, which is a master bedroom and bath associated closet. They are proposing a deck off of the ma, off of the master bedroom, which is 16 feet wide by seven feet six inches deep. And here on this floor plan, you can also note the windows on the property where they're proposing them and where they look out onto. So the windows on the top of the photograph are furthest space from any neighbor to their left or their right. There's about 35 feet or more of continued roof area of that existing single-family home. And then on this side is the photo that I showed you of their adjacent neighbors to the left where they had that landscaping. But again, this window is very small, probably just used for what's required of ventilation in the bathroom. And then proposing doors here to access the second story deck. Some elevations. East elevation, uh, existing on top and proposed on the bottom. Labelled the heights on most of these, but as you can see, there's a low plane of 12 foot nine inches on that ridge and then going to 14 feet to the, the area near where the addition's being constructed. So visually, although the interior floor, the ceiling height is eight feet, you're not seeing that much difference on the exterior as to where these roof lines meet up with the proposed addition. West elevation, again, existing on top, proposed on the bottom. This is the view when you're in the rear yard, looking back at the house. Showing the scale, showing the deck, showing the eve projections and the general compatibility with the existing structure. North elevations, this is where I mentioned the most windows that they had placed was furthest from their side property line. And this is really the most openings that we see on that addition where everywhere else is pretty limited. And then on the south elevations with those smaller windows, I mentioned this one being the bathroom window and then the two windows in the bedroom. On both the finished floor as well as, uh, the height measurement to the top plate and then maxing out at the 21 feet six inches for the overall height. There's some material details and renderings that were provided by the designer. They're essentially going to match, uh, both the stucco in terms of the color and the wood plating to go up to four feet high, as you see shown in the rendering. The roofing will match existing, the paint will match existing. There's details of the proposed windows and doors. Fine with a little bit of a, well, they're going with night, although that's not what's shown in the rendering, but that's what they specified. So along with this, in terms of staff recommending approval of this project and our architectural considerations that were taken into our analysis as well as, you know, conditions of family residential design guidelines in which architectural elements need to be designed to eliminate the appearance of a box-like buildings. The size of this addition and it being a second story addition as well as those varying roof heights kind of lends to this design that they're proposing. Couple more of the findings listed. It's compatible with our general plan, goals and policies for revitalizing existing residential uses and also providing and maintaining, uh, streets that is compatible with the neighborhood. But based on the staff report and analysis provided, the resolution and the project plans in this presentation, staff has recommended approval. And that concludes my presentation and I'm here for questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Just had, um, one question, which was, did the applicant give any of the, the wet bar? The master bathroom was for?
I'm going to have to ask you to repeat a part of your question on my side. You kind of cut out a little bit. The question was regarding something with the master bath.
Side of the master bathroom, there is a kitchenette. Did the applicant give any indication of the purpose of the kitchenette?
Yeah, I can pull up the full plans real quick. I think it was, uh, described as a wet bar. Given that, you know, typically before the ADU laws passed in California, we would look at something like that with a bit more skepticism in terms of whether or not it was intended to be an extra unit or, uh, you know, a bathroom. They did provide, I believe, an elevation of that area where it is just a small sink with a microwave. And they can definitely speak to that. Um, but my concerns pre-ADU law would be, is this an attempt to have a separate living unit? Plus, if it were an ADU, it would not require any discretionary review, which means they would have gone through this process potentially for unnecessary reasons.
Anything else for commissioners?
Just want to
Go ahead, Dan.
Sure. Uh, I just want to verify. So the applicant meets all the setback requirements?
The project meets all development regulations, correct? It includes a five-foot side setback and a 15-foot rear.
Okay.
Chair, I just have one question for Beth and that is, um, going back to the map, with the lots, not sure where that is.
Topo map?
Yeah, so, yeah, the topo map should probably be the right one. You know, because it's the pie shape, so I'm not really figuring out exactly where the second story is going to sit in relationship to that topography.
Okay, so I'm sharing my screen now. Are you able to see the site plan?
Yes, that, that I get, but I, I'm not understanding where that is in relationship to the other properties.
So this is the area of the proposed second story addition, right? And then if I go to the next one, we kind of rotate that and that area is here on the rear portion of the existing home.
Okay, so there'll be one balcony with a slider, sliding glass door that will have maybe a, I don't know, 16th of a, of a configuration with that lot behind it.
Uh, clarify your question, please.
Yeah, go back to the, to the lot, the topo map.
Okay.
So where you were, you know, drawing your cursor right in there. So that, that is in configuration with 1618. 1618 goes all the way down to about where the blue line 26 to 66 intersects.
Right, right.
1618 goes all the way from basically the top of the red line all the way down to about, yeah, a little further to the right. Okay, so, so that potential oversight, looking down into that lot, it's going to be just from that one sliding glass door and balcony into that small little section. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, that's correct. And in terms of the grade change, you can look at it as essentially where the front property line of 1618 is. That's 262. 264 is the next line. And about 266 is the line that runs through 1618 and is towards this portion of their, uh, rear property line of the subject site. So it's, it's relatively flat through here. Like I said, the main, uh, change in grade is once you get to 1624 and 1630, which 1624 and 1630 are both, uh, two-story homes, whereas everything on this side, I'm pretty certain were one stories.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Got it. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we will open it up to the applicant at this time, if you don't have anything else for the staff.
The applicant is here. I'll allow Cassandra August to speak now.
Hello.
Hello.
I didn't prepare a present. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Beth. I'm sorry.
Yeah, are you prepared to make any statement about the project in general or anything that was potentially missed in my presentation? Feel free to do so now.
Thank you. I was going to say I didn't prepare a presentation, but I did want to reiterate with the homeowner. The two are planning on this being their retirement home. They're both currently retired. So this is their shangri-la to go up into their master suite and enjoy the beautiful vista of the bay. And the, both of them are looking forward to having that house there. Theirs. It's not a party house for kids and the balcony is not going to be used for anything inappropriate. And that's all their space. And to speak to the area by the walk-in closet, that is her coffee bar. So she wants to be able to go out of her bed and go right into making coffee and then just hang out in her room. So it's her treat. Yeah, that's really just their, yeah, it's their retirement.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you, Ms. August. We will open it up to public comment at this time. Beth?
Hi, can you hear me?
I muted, uh, yeah, there we go.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, well, we said we would open it up to a public comment, Beth? Anybody?
Rodney is there. I allowed them to speak. They're ready to make their comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Barshin.
Hi, this is Dolores and we are directly behind the property. And I think you can see from the pictures that the balcony will overlook, um, our entire backyard and our kitchen area and will take away really any privacy that we have in our retirement home. That was our concern where the balcony would be, that if that was hanging over our backyard, we would no longer have any privacy.
And the, and the area that it overhangs is our grassy area. So that we have most of the backyard backyard is cement and, um, covered with stones. But when we entertain our family, our granddaughter who comes three days a week, the grass is where they play. So that will be looking right over that part of the land, uh, of our backyard, even though it is only about a third or a quarter, a half of the backyard, it's the part we use the most. It comes right directly out the back door, up through the laundry room. And we've done some planting. We planted the trees back there. The new owner has already raised the fence, uh, back there so he could improve privacy. And what we really want is that same consideration for privacy in our backyard when we're sitting back.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the Barshin? I'm hoping I'm not ruining your name, sir.
No, that sounds good.
Anything, commissioners? No? Okay, thank you, sir. We'll bring it, uh, anybody else for, um, public comment, Beth?
Can I add to the privacy? I've talked with the homeowner and they did mention-
Can we, can we stop for a second, please? Cassandra, I'm going to ask you to mute yourself. And then the next person here for public comment was Al James, who has been unmuted. So Al, you're able to speak and public comment is limited to three minutes. So once you take up your time, whether or not you max out on that three, we can't go back to you. The commissioners can go back to the applicant for them to address anything that has been said during public comment. Um, Mr. Al James, please feel free to speak now.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to, uh, clarify the fact that, uh, there is a substantial amount of distance between our fence.
And where the balcony will be.
And this balcony, we, it's called a balcony, but it's, it's more, more of a catwalk.
It's not very-
First of all. Secondly, the, the language is, uh, a little heavy-handed when it, it comes to describing, we're not hanging over anybody's property. We're, we are well back from that property line and it's, yeah, substantially back and away from any kind of, uh, uh, thing that could be considered intrusive. That's, 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 I, in my humble opinion.
No.
It's, it's just, it's-
He is overly sensitive.
Who was that?
That was-
I have no idea.
I muted. I muted that. That was, uh, the neighbor who made their initial comment and did not listen to instructions about muting.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
So this is Lorraine McGriff and that, and that's our property. And our, our main goal, as Cassandra said, is we just retired, we'd been away from the peninsula. We both grew up in Seaside and we have the opportunity to come back and retire. And all we want to be able to do is enjoy the bay view. I have no interest or desire to see anything in anybody else's yard. Honestly. We won't be up there very, you know.
Proportionately that-
Oh, but excuse me. We're on public comment and this seems to be the owners that are talking right now.
Yeah, can we not make a comment?
Not on public comment.
Oh, okay, sorry. I apologize.
Well, my name is Al James.
Right, and you were the one that was talking, then all of a sudden the lady took over, but yeah.
Well, the lady is my wife, sir.
Okay, so, very good.
Owen, can we just get this clear? So the both applicant, architect, you're both considered as one. We allowed for Cassandra to speak first. If you did not understand the part of that process, that's fine. But when we opened it up for public comment, that was only for public comment to be considered.
Okay, sorry.
Everybody's given, everybody is given three minutes and I'm going to mute you now, uh, so I can speak uninterrupted. Again, like I said, the commission can, after hearing public comment, which the only person on here is your neighbor who submitted the letter, make their public comment, can open it back up to the applicant. So for purposes of officiating this meeting correctly, we'll allow for the commission to do that if they choose to want to have the applicant address their comments. You are, Cassandra, can speak. There's typically not a limit on that, but for the purposes of tonight, we are going to ask that either one of you address those comments as best as you can in under five minutes.
Okay, so we're still on public-
Owen, please proceed.
Okay, we're still, public comment is still open. Do you have anybody for public comment, Beth, that is not with the actual project?
We only have one and that was the neighbor Rodney who already spoke.
Okay, very good. Public comment is still open. Anybody wishing to speak can raise their hand to do so. We will be closing it. Public comment is closed. We'll bring it back to the commissioners at this point. Commissioners?
Um, Beth or anyone else, what the height is of the rear fence on the subject property?
I went out there to took, take the site photographs. I wasn't focused on the rear fence, but if you want to ask that of the owner, it seems like it was, uh, recently raised.
Oh, I mean, he, here's my observation. You have a, a rear fence that is presumably six foot tall, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, but that's presumably six feet tall. That rear fence is 15 feet six inches from where the deck will be. So the setback is 15 feet. It exceeds the setback to 15 foot finished floor elevation or finished floor height of the of the deck is 10 feet three inches with a person standing on top of it, their eyes are maybe at 15 feet. My point is, is that you've got 15 feet of height and 15 feet of distance. That would be a 45-degree angle if there were no fence with a six-foot fence where the, the angle of, of vision from the deck is, is negligible. It is not looking over the fence into the backyard. While the, you know, the following of the rules- While the, you know, the following of the rules had got a little bit muddied with regards to who's speaking when and in protocol. I, I don't see this design. We've, we've looked at a lot of projects where we've even approved variances for decks within the setbacks. And, and this is one of the most compliant applications and most compliant projects I, I've, I've seen on this Commission. And so I don't personally have any concerns with regards to the deck. I understand people want their privacy, but that doesn't trump the fact that other people get the opportunity to improvements to their home. I, I have to make a comment that it's one of the most attractive homes I, I've seen in Seaside. It's, it's a very simple ranch style, but they, they dolled it up and did a really, really nice job. And if they continue that architectural styling on the second floor, I think they've done an excellent job. Did have a question. It looks as though some of the work has already begun, because some of the photos did show windows being replaced at the back of the building. And so I don't know if, you know, was there a red tag? Or did work start without approvals or was some of that work not requiring approvals? That was one question. But other than that, I find the project extremely attractive. Frankly, the only thing I thought was a little odd was the courtyard walls didn't match the, the styling of the rest of the house. But other than that, I, I, I find it very agreeable.
Thank you, Commissioner Silva. Commissioner Hahn?
Seeing that it meets all the setback requirements, I, I, I sympathize for the, the back neighbor, you know. But, you know, I can't say no to this because, you know, the applicant, you know, they follow the rules and everything. And, you know, they want to improve their well-being, their house, their property. I can't say no. I can't, this is, you know, it's, you know, my parish lives in Seaside Highlands. And there's a house behind them overseas in their backyard. But it is what it is, you know. And for me, I have no problem approving this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hahn. Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I'm pretty much in agreement with the prior comments. In a world where we have zero lot land line developments going in, you know, we're perfectly aware of what the value of land is. This one feels to me like there's an awful lot of flexibility already built into those lots. They're pretty irregular. I think with the, any trees that are planted, I think with any fencing, if they want to extend the fence, maybe they, they submit an application to do that if they're concerned about it. I, I just think if we say no to this one, we say no to every second story addition that comes for the Commission. So again, like Danny said, I, I, I understand privacy concerns. I just think there are better workarounds than saying no to this particular project. I think the benefits far outweigh the negatives for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I, I understand with the, the neighbors, but unfortunately, I, I have, we all have the same issues. You know, people build up above us and there's nothing we can do about it. Luckily, they do have a fifteen-foot setback, and that's from the deck. And if you look, I think the width of the deck was eight feet or six feet. I don't have the drawings in front of me. What was that, Beth? I'm sorry.
Seven feet, six inches by sixteen.
Yeah, so you know, you're not that far out from the house. I, I feel for the neighbors, like I said, but like you said, hopefully some trees can be planted or something to shade it or to block it all off. But I agree, I'd have to vote for this because it does fall within all the boundaries of the code. And I believe the houses are within the deed are to be able to build second stories. So I would vote for it also. So with that said, do we want to open it back up to the applicant at this time? Do the other three Commissioners have any problem with that? Okay. Beth, are you there?
I am.
Okay. The Commissioners have all agreed that we'll let the, the applicant speak one more time.
Hello. Yes, I've talked with the homeowner and there's been a lot of discussion about planting some fruit trees and those will eventually get anywhere from ten to more feet tall. And that'll provide a lot of privacy along that backyard area. And that they are also interested in creating more privacy by maxing the height of the fence best they can. And then it's to speak to Mr. Silva, there is currently a permit for a kitchen remodel and a deck. That's why there's so much work going on. Yeah. That's all, unless anyone had any questions.
No. The Commissioners, anything? Very good. Okay, we will close the applicant and bring it back to the Commissioners. Do I have a motion? Can't hear you, Mr. Silva.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I am happy to move that we approve Architectural Review Application Number BAR twenty-dash-zero-nine for the rule of a five-hundred-and-twenty-five square foot second story addition and a hundred-and-twenty square foot balcony located at sixteen-sixty-three Mescal.
So I got a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Beth, you want to take a hand roll call?
Sure. Will you please clarify who was the second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Commissioner Evans?
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Questioning to approve on this Chairperson Owens? I'm asking for a I vote or not.
Oh, I.
Silva?
I.
Evans?
I.
And when?
I.
A vote passes unanimously for Architectural Review Application twenty-one-dash-oh-nine.
Uh, Beth, we just make note, there's a seven-day period of appeal.
Uh, Owen should have that language. Thank you.
An appeal being made submitted in writing within seven calendar days from the date of this meeting. It will need the required filing fees at that time.
Well done, Chair.
That's as best as I can remember. It's been a year since we've been in the City Hall or better. Okay, very good. We will move on to Application B, variance application, V twenty-one-dash-zero-two Star Mallory, applicant and property owners requesting a variance to allow for an as-built stairway that is attached to the deck project into encroach into the rear yard setback located at eighteen-eighty-nine Highland Street in the RS twelve single-family residential zone. Staff?
Oops. Oh, Beth, are you gonna, yeah, thank you. Giving Commission, the application, this is a variance. And this is for a exterior stairway that's an above-ground deck that projects two feet, nine inches into the rear setback. And this is a nine-foot setback, which allows for protection into a rear yard when attached to a deck or a dwelling. As background, the site itself is developed with a nine-hundred-and-eighty-two square foot single-family dwelling. And there is an attached thirty-eight-by-seven deck to the rear, which is two-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet. The site was developed in nineteen fifty-six. The unpermitted status of the exterior stairway was discovered by the city during a recent real property inspection where the owner of record now was purchasing the property. Again, the exterior stairway projects two feet, nine inches into that setback. It's currently at about seven feet, three inches from the rear. The existing stairway is the only access from the deck into the rear property. The deck is, we'll see on some exhibits, is, has a five-foot side yard setback. So if there was to be any stairways to be built on the sides where the deck is on the side, there would be some substantial removal of the, of portions of the existing deck. And the deck itself is in compliance with required setbacks. There has been no public comment been received during the noticing period for the project or after the publication of the staff report. Next slide. So here we have the site plan, the primer, the property is in red. The east is Highland Street. And to the rear, the west is the rear yard. The deck is in the blue outline and the yellow outline is the stairway. So there is basically a landing about five feet that's in the middle of the stairway. And then you have the steps which go down into the side, into the rear yard. So the yellow doesn't represent where it's entirely flat. It's only a landing that's in the middle of that area. Uh, next slide, please. So here is a, the rendering or, or sketch that was put together by the applicant, since it's as-built. We're relying on the pictures primarily and we will have to show you at the end of the presentation. But you can see the dwelling and where the deck is attached. And then we have the stairway landing, which is seven feet, three inches from the rear yard and the steps that go down onto each side. Uh, the rear yard is primarily flat and we'll demonstrate that with some photographs. Here's as-built dimensions the, the owner had put together to show the spans of the deck and how it was constructed. And then the lower portion is the landing area and then the steps that go down to each side of the stairway. Next slide, please. So the first photo is on the south side and it's basically looking to the north. And so you can see the rear yard area that's between the fence, the rear fence and the deck. And you can see the stairway landing that is on the side of, or between the deck and the rear fence. Looking on the bottom photograph, this is looking toward the south. And there is a stairway that is a below-ground deck, which is allowed to extend to property line if it's less than eighteen inches. So there is no in compliance with that. And that, that you can see where the, where the landing does step down onto that deck portion. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the northern side property on the top photo. So you can see where that deck does end in line with the side yard. And then on the bottom photograph, this is again showing the deck as it extends toward the southern property. And then you can see the landing where the deck and the landing steps are at that point. Next slide, please. Uh, so we have variance findings in our code. And usually a variance is unusual shape, topography and circumstance of property. And then there's also the general health, safety and welfare questions. Uh, one of the things that we did look at in terms of how the landing in the stairway was is that it does provide the only access currently from the deck into the rear yard. Otherwise, if you were to access the rear yard, it would have to be through the side, through the garage area or through side yards from, from the front yard. So we found that this does give a safe and adequate access for the property. We did look at the surrounding properties. The topography is that this portion of Highland Street sits above Soto Street that is to the rear. Soto Street is probably about two to three feet below the grades of the properties in Highland Street. So there is a differentiation in the, in the, in the grade. You have a fence that's about five feet tall, but with the corresponding topography, that property is about eight feet below. So there really is not much visibility from the landing or the deck area itself that goes into the rear yard below. So we kind of took into account that aspect. We did find that the overall health, safety and welfare of the adjoining properties is not going to be infringed upon. There is no surcharge of any sort that would be impacting the lower grade. So overall, what city staff found is that we found that it somewhat is a de minimis aspect in terms of how the access can be made to the rear yard without substantially disrupting what the existing deck is. The deck has existed with a permit. But in this case, the owner is just trying to legalize what the existing exterior stairway would be without having to do other modifications to the deck. Um, next slide, please. Um, city staff has provided a resolution with finding and conditions for the board committed consideration of the variance request. Any questions to staff?
Commissioners, anything? No, no questions, Rick.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're seeing there's no questions for staff. We'll open up public comment at this time. I mean, I'm sorry, open it up for the applicant.
Please use the raise your hand function to indicate that you are the applicant and you wish to speak on this project. Not seeing a hand raised.
Okay, we will bring it to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item may do so. Public comment is open. See, nobody for public comment, Beth?
Nobody.
Very good. Public comment's still open. Public comment is closing. Public comment is now closed. We will bring it back to Commissioners. Commissioner Evans, you just look like you're ready to say something, so go ahead.
No, I just love, it's better to ask forgiveness than permission. What can I say? Certainly not the most elegant-looking deck. Certainly not the stairways that inspire a whole lot of confidence, but obviously serve its purpose for many years and nobody's complained about it. So not so sure that it necessitates any removal or modifications at this point. Unless you guys can think of something that I've completely missing.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Hahn?
I have a question. Can I ask the staff something?
Sure.
How long's been the stairway attached to the deck? How long's been there?
Tried to look at some aerial photos, which was a little difficult, but given the age of the deck, I mean, that could have been there probably at least fifteen to twenty years.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Silva?
Yeah, you know, like Mr. Evans said, it's, it's not the most beautiful of decks or stairs. But having said that, the fact that it's, it's well below the fence line, it is simply a staircase to get them down. You know, we've seen a versatile concerning issues. This one certainly doesn't concern me.
We lost your voice.
Lost you, well. You're, you're muted.
Any of that?
No, we got it all the way to the very end.
Oh, I just said I, I, I can certainly support staff's recommendation for a variance on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Silva. Yeah, I agree with the other two Commissioners. It real irritates me when people build without getting a permit. And I know that these, these new owners have nothing to do with that, so as much as I don't like giving permits for something already built, I'm for that. It's been there a long time. Obviously, it hasn't been a problem and nobody called in on it. So very good. So that said, who wants to make a motion?
I'll be happy to. I would move that we approve variance application number V as in Victor twenty-one oh-two. The Star Mallory, the applicant and property owner to allow for an as-built stairway that is attached to the deck project to encroach into the rear yard setback located at eighteen-eighty-nine Highland Street.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, Beth, you can take a roll call on that.
Sure. Commissioner Silva?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Wen?
Hi.
Sharon?
Hi. Very good. Good evening.
Hey, Keith?
How you doing, Keith?
He hasn't kicked in yet.
Let staff know that Keith Dodson is here. And we are moving on to item C, Use Permit Application, UP twenty-one-dash-zero-one Board of Architecture Review Application Number BAR twenty-one-dash-zero-six. Hugo Perez, applicant and Robert Booth, property owner, are requesting the approval of a parking exception and residential design review for a two-story addition to an existing one-story, single-family dwelling located at sixteen forty-four Luxton. Staff?
Uh, so background-
Uh, so background for the project. This is an existing six hundred and eight square foot. Um, it, well, the proposed project would be eight, six hundred eight squ- six hundred eight square foot two-story addition to the one-story, seven hundred and twenty square foot house. Um, the house was built in nineteen fifty-five. So you'll see as we get through the elevations and photographs. That this is not one of the typical agency redevelopment agency homes that you found built in the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen hundred blocks of the city. Uh, so this home kind of pre-gated any of the is agency homes. Um, the project would be two hundred forty-seven square feet on the first floor for an expansion of, um, the lower floor area for a office dining area. And then there would be a new three hundred sixty square, three hundred sixty-one square foot second floor, which would be a master bedroom. Um, when completed, project would have, um, one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Um, the FAR is point three six, lot coverage point four two percent. Um, height would be under the twenty-four feet at twenty-three feet, four inches, twenty, and the garage would be maintained as a one-car garage. And the uncovered space that would be required under the code when you have an addition that results in over twelve hundred square feet to the dwelling. Um, would be in the driveway. And I'll kind of explain a little bit on the site plan as to what the requirements are for the uncovered space to be set back behind the fifteen-foot required setback. Uh, the property here is showing in red. The, um, west side of the property is on Luxton Street. That's, and then on the north side, you have a single-family dwelling. To the east, you have single-family dwellings and to the, uh, south. We have an apartment buildings and these are the hand and assembled apartments, which I think now are called the sea view apartments. So we have apartments that are spaced out throughout this portion of the city. And so this is one development where those apartments exist. So here is the site plan, um. The house is, um, seventeen feet from the front setback. And that is, um, on the right, on the west side, which is, thank you, which is to the left. Um, the side yard setback on the north is nine feet. Where minimum five feet is required. The addition that's shaded, um, would show that there's a setback gonna be a five feet from the northern property line. It'd be fifteen feet to the rear. And then it would be twenty-two feet to the south, which is the side street of the corner lot. Um, there is the area which is a crosshatch, which is on the south side of the addition. That is a second floor, um, deck balcony area that would come off of the master bedroom. Um, there'd be no modifications made to the garage. So we can see the elevations that are on the left side of the, of the property. The front is on the top. Uh, we have the north side is this next photo, the, um, this, the third elevation is the garage. And then we have the rear to the bottom. Now going to the project site. Um, we have the, on the far upper right is the front elevation. Uh, the elevation on the upper left is the rear elevation. Uh, the photograph on the bottom left is the proposed, um, north elevation. And then we have the south elevation shown on the bottom right. What I want to point out to on the north elevation, there are windows that are proposed, um, that do face the property to the north. Um, however, you can see that those triangular windows, those are within the stairway area that accesses to the second floor. And they are showing some small upper windows, which would be on the master bedroom, but which basically would be on the upper area. And there is, the addition does extend beyond the end of the house to the north. So it does have a lesson impact in terms of how it accesses or views into that adjoining property. Uh, next slide please. Uh, the floor plan, just, um, just giving you the perspective. Um, you can see that they will be, uh, matching the gabled roof. And, um, what you can see on the bottom or in the middle, which is the proposed addition, you can see that that's where there will be a stairway being added. Um, to the upper level as well as the extension of a dining, um, living office area. And, uh, you will see on the addition itself on top. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, the, that was the master bedroom above. I'm, I, excuse me. The lo- the, the far right is where the addition would be for the living room dining off of the, off of the kitchen. Apologize for that. Next slide. Uh, so the applicant did give a kind of a three D perspective, but, um, I don't think that really re- the, the, the three-dimensional perspective is just kind of giving you dimensions as far as the addition being set back. But, um, how it would look in, in its appearance, um, is gonna be, I think, in terms of how you're sitting below the street level looking up. Um, I think it does fit into the context of the dwelling without being kind of a pop-up look as far as what's been commented before on some design aspects. And what you can see there is on the middle photo on the top, this is from the front elevation. Looking backwards and you can see where the arrow is that shows the staking and flagging. On the lower left. This is the street side yard. Um, and you can see that the addition would be behind that mature cypress tree that exists on the property. And we do want to get into that, expl- uh, talk about that tree as it's being preserved in relation to how it impacts the covered parking requirements. And then this is a photograph taken from the north perspective, looking, you can see where the staking and flagging is. Uh, next photo please. Let, um, what I will explain, okay, first of all, on the, the single-family residential design guidelines. Um, we find that the project will have modulation in its, uh, perspective in terms of how the existing dwelling is nine feet setback on that northern side and how the, the addition will come out five feet. So there is a dimensional appearance on that. Um, as it appears from the street side of the corner lot, it also is setback away from that side, um, property. So you have a kind of a dimensional perspective on that respect. And then from the front. It is not, um, an addition that pops up over the front of the house giving it a, a mass. The setback kind of offsets the mass of the project. Um, they will have a belly band that does, um, go around the perimeter of the property. Aside from the deck that breaks it up. So there's breakup within the appearance of the project that find, staff finds that it would be compliant with the design guidelines. Um, as far as the use permit is concerned. In order to have expanded the garage backward to, um, increase the size. It would have had to go back inward to where the tree is and possibly would disrupt the root system of the tree. And even, um, building a detached garage to the rear would present difficulties in terms of how the root systems and how the preservation of that cypress tree can be maintained. So what staff did look at, um, that this is a one-way street that wraps around on Luxton Street. And that the garage, the driveway itself is currently set back twenty-two feet from the front property line. So we have a car that's, it can be maintained within that driveway, which doesn't, um, encroach into the sidewalk area. Um, so staff finds that the preservation of the tree does merit consideration. And also in that the addition is only, it's about a hundred and twenty square feet over what would be the twelve hundred square foot minimum in terms of consideration for that second uncovered space. Which, um, in the code requires it to be setback fifteen feet from the rear or out of the, the, the front setback. So that garage would have to have been setback an additional probably eighteen feet in order for it to get, be a compliant uncovered space in a tandem situation. Um, but staff finds that the way that the house has been designed into the neighborhood and how it fits into the context that, that would be disruption to how it wo- would blend with the neighborhood. And staff finds that the way the project is designed, um, would be consistent with how, what findings we need to make for use permit and the design guidelines. Um, city staff has a resolution and findings and conditions for your consideration on the approval of the proposed project.
Any questions for staff? Commissioners? Even with the gar- Rick, I, I have one. Even with the garage, are you still gonna be able to get a car parked in front of it?
Uh, yes, you will.
Okay.
It's, uh, it is twenty-two feet from the edge of the sidewalk. And nineteen feet is typical of what's required at a minimum for a car to be maintained outside of the sidewalk area.
And you're talking from the backside of the sidewalk, right?
Correct, yes.
As we walk a lot and most cars don't fit in their driveways. They're hanging over the sidewalk. Very good. Commissioners, anything for staff?
Yes, this is Keith. I'm sorry I was late, uh, have, but, uh, I joined uh, towards the beginning of this and I, I wanted to ask with regard to that, that space in front. Can we put any district restrictions on it in terms of oversized vehicles like, uh, campers and things like that that would extend into the, the sidewalk?
Staff?
Um, it, it, it's, it's already would, it would be illegal to do so now under
Okay.
standards to park in a vehicle that does overhang into a sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, we will open it up to the applicant. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I've just been sitting here just noodling on this whole thing and, and Rick, the, could you go back? Early on, I think there was a picture that was an aerial picture that kind of showed the four houses sitting there. And, uh, then the, yeah, that one. You know, and I, I'm a tree hugger, so, so don't, please don't take this wrong, but I'm just wondering in that location, in another fifty years, what is that tree gonna look like or do? And I, I don't have any feel for huge, mature trees like that. I thi- I think somewhere in here it said it was a pine.
Cypress.
It looked like a cypress to me, yeah. So, you know, that's gonna be pretty invasive. What, what? I mean, i- i- is it just at this point, the, you know, cows left the barn and it's not even worth thinking about whether that tree belongs in that spot. It, it certainly, when I drove that street, it certainly looked like it didn't belong. You know, it looked like it was just a huge monster tree. Uh, about ready to take over those two houses that it's in between. So I, I guess my question, Rick, and I apologize for this dragging that out is is it even possible for that tree to be removed? Or is that just something that because tree US, tree city USA requirements are, uh, too strong? But it, it's, it's location is sacrosanct and it's not going anywhere.
The owner has expressed to staff when we did talk regarding the tree that they wish to maintain that tree. And they find that to be a asset to what they like on the property.
Correct. Yeah, if they don't want to move the tree, then don't make them move the tree.
Staff? Can we put in with the, um, say we, we okay this proposal? How about we put in that an arborist comes in and trims the tree back a little, cause it does look very wild when I drove by it too. And maybe that'll help by bringing it in a little bit that, um, when they're doing the construction and everything, it'll make it through it.
When, um, the applicant has yet to speak, so maybe we can discuss that with the applicant. And then we can frame that into a condition after the applicant has had comment or can give you information on how they, they, they plan to maintain the tree.
Well then, Rick, let me ask, let me go back to my question. Um, let's take the owner's desire out of the equation. Uh, if we were sitting around planning that location and, and, and just making this a better home and more livable, I, I would think the thing that we would try to do is move that garage back into where the tree is at. And, you know, cypress is gonna have monster roots down there as old as this cypress looks. Um, so sooner or later, it's gonna, it's gonna be in, it's gonna impact the front home. It's gonna impact the garage that is going to be built and possibly even the neighbors. So is that even feasible under the current city's approach to trees? Is that just, take that off the table, that tree is gonna stay. That, that's my question.
To remove a tree and an owner could approach the city and it's basically having some type of impact to either sidewalk foundation or, um, it's diseased. And in this case, the tree is healthy. And we have an owner who's maintaining the tree and wishes to continue to maintain the tree.
Correct. Yeah, I was just asking, taking all that out of, out of the equation, whether or not it's even feasible if they wanted to. But doesn't sound like, it, it sounds like it'd be a, a reach for the city to remove that tree. I mean, it's a beautiful tree and it's been there a long, long time. So I'm not advocating that. I was just curious in a situation like this where it makes a lot of sense to push that garage back into that area, but now you're into the tree space.
If I can just clarify a couple of things regarding tree removal. Uh, Medina was right in explaining how that type of request is generated. It typically is by the property owner who does have a concern about damage being done. Uh, once they do submit that request, though, the city does have an on-call arborist that goes out and does a tree risk assessment, essentially saying whether or not the tree is healthy, if there's any risk that are associated with it. And then they recommend, like you suggested, potentially requiring pruning to be done. So it may be that pruning really is needed, um, getting an arborist out there to really point out what needs to be done. Will kind of prevent a tree care company that doesn't correctly care for trees. And a species this large should really be done by a specialist. Um, but the process is definitely not that easy. It's not a request and be granted. And unfortunately, you know, we see around the city some places where as to what they promote now in terms of the right tree in the right place is not being done. We can tell the age of this tree is beyond some of our ears here. Um, that, that wasn't a philosophy back then and who knows if even the neighborhood existed as it does now. It definitely provides a lot of privacy though to the adjacent apartments, especially with building a second story addition. Um, but yeah, that's kind of where we're at now with the city and how we process those.
Thanks, Beth.
You good, Dave?
Yeah.
Beth, before you go, I have one question. If they're gonna pour a slab for this garage, how's it gonna do for the roots of that tree? Because obviously the, the roots go out further than what the branches do. And anyway, just curious if, you know, may I have your root specialist look at that too? What depth they're gonna go down or whatever. Sad thing is
Medina can clarify the distance from the proposed addition and the foundation that will be poured for that to the distance to essentially the drip line of the tree, which is the furthest branch reaching out from the tree trunk. Medina, is there more than like twenty feet there or?
It's probably about, I would say it's about fifteen feet.
From the back of the garage, Rick?
No, uh, the garage would not be modified. The garage would stay as is. It's only the addition that's on the north side of the project that would have any foundation constructed.
Oh, so the garage, the garage is existing then, the slab already? And it's not gonna get any bigger?
No.
Very good. I'm, I'm done. Sorry about that. Let's open it up. A- any other commissioners, anything? Let's open it up to the applicant at this time. Thank you, staff.
Please use the raise your hand function to indicate that you want to make public comment. Here we go. We have Robert Booth looking to speak.
Now, is this the applicant? Beth?
Robert, will you please identify yourself before you start your public comment?
Hi there, I'm Robert Booth. I'm the property owner. Hugo Perez is the designer who is, is handling, um, the application and the process and, um, has worked with Rick Medina as, as well as myself. I've talked with Rick Medina too. Um, I, um, have lived in the house now since twenty sixteen after the passing of my mother. She lived here for twenty-seven years before me. And I've been coming here for over thirty years to this place and I, I'm from Monterey. I'm a native. I grew up here. I love these cypress trees. I have a deep love for them. Um, uh, having one, this giant in my backyard, it's, it's very dear to me. Uh, um, so I, 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 I'd like to not see the tree go if at all possible. Um, it has, it has done intrusion problems. Uh, it, it lifted the sidewalk. I got a letter from the building, uh, the engineering department in the city here last spring. I got a contractor, I got the tree permit, uh, um, I fixed the concrete. I paid for all that. Completely repaired fifteen feet of the sidewalk and, no, thirty feet of sidewalk got replaced and fifteen feet of curb and gutter. And, and everything was, you know, the, the permits and everything are on record for the, the property that all that was done to, to code. And, um, I, I have ever since, uh, well, the last few years, I've tried to make sure I get permits for everything I do because uh, I mean, I've, I've built all the fences I've built. Um, so I, this, this, uh, this addition to the house is, I, I, I'm gonna have at least another So I, this, this, uh, this addition to the house is, I, I, I'm gonna have at least another. Ten years in my career teaching in Salinas and I plan to retire here. I. I used to live in the Central Valley. I, I like the weather here. I, I'm, it's nice to be home. I'm, like I said, I'm from, from here. My mother's sisters live in Pacific Grove and Seaside. I have cousins all over the peninsula, families here, so I. Um, I'm hoping to, to get this project in the back. Uh, the, the view from that roof, which I replaced that roof myself two years ago. Um, spent me eight weeks up there on that roof doing that. The view is amazing. I'd love to have that view as my bedroom view. Um, uh, that's about it. Uh, thank you for your consideration, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Okay, we will open it up to public comment at this time, Beth.
Do you have the designer looking to speak? So I'm going to allow Hugo to make a comment.
Yes, hi. Good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to add to the, um. Owners that this, uh, addition will be really, um. Meets all the architecturals and the skulls to this, um, existence building. In addition, that is, uh, we try to build, design the, the additions with the privacy for all the owners. I mean, all the, um. Neighbors around too. And the main, uh. That we're looking here as the owner mentioned is a baby. It's a beautiful view right there. I mean, that would be their master bedrooms where they can just staring at the nice, beautiful baby view. Um, the house, um, it's, uh, it's a small existing house, so this will bring. A little bit more of the additions to the house in additions to more costiness, so. Um, and it will meet all the materials and colors to the existing house, and I think the owner is doing a pretty good job in maintaining the. The house in a very good condition, so looking forward to any comments. Thank you.
Commissioners, anything for? Public comment? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Hugo. Um, we will bring it back. We will close public comment now unless there's, you see anybody else, Beth?
No hands are raised at this time.
Okay, we are closing public comments. Public comment is closed. We'll bring it back to commissioners. Start with you, um, Mr. Dodson.
Yes, um, I don't really see anything in this that, uh, that bothers me extensively or really at all. And, uh, I would vote to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Commissioner Hahn?
Um, I have no problem with, um, approving this, so. I, 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 but it's good for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Um, I'm fine.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Silva, I'm sorry. That's the last I've heard from you there.
I don't have a lot to, well. I, I don't have any objections to the project. I just wanted to make a comment with regards to. The tree and it's interesting because I have photographs of Carmel just a couple blocks from the beach. Back at the turn of the, uh, twentieth century and there were no trees in Carmel, no Cypress, no Oaks. It was barren and one of the characteristics that's so unique about Carmel and part of what makes it perhaps as valuable as it is. Apart from the ocean views and the beach, but the, um, i- is, is the rich trees there. They actually, the streets. Divide around the trees and you build houses around the trees. And so, you know, it's not every day we see a property in seaside with such a monument. Great, uh, as beautiful it is, as it is, even if it feels a little bit out of place, it just seems like, uh, an excellent asset and. I'm all for cutting down trees when it's necessary, um, but if we have a person who, who owns a property and wants to preserve the trees. I'm all for it. Um, and, and my observation, you know, I was, I, I, I questioned the driveway initially. But I think that the fact that there's twenty-two and a half feet of setback from the back of curb to the face of the garage. And the driveway is not the primary walkway to the front door. There's a separate walkway. I don't have any problem with that. And the, the, I noticed that in the north and the south elevations, that the massing of the addition was a little bit. Tower-esque, it was a little bit vertical and I didn't think it was as attractive perhaps as it could be, but then. When I saw it balanced in the photographs with that Cypress, it, it kinda. Cypress towered over it and ma- it knocked it down and it really made it feel just fine. So. Um, considering this is a thirty-seven hundred foot lot and they, there's a limited amount of yard. Uh, I think that the, the design to go up the way that they've done is, is very suitable for the project and I think. I think they've done a really good job of balancing the design considerations.
Thank you, Commissioner Silva. I guess it's my turn now, huh? I agree with what all the commissioners said, um, I find no problem with it. My, my biggest fear was that the garage was new, but seeing it's already existing, I have no problem with the project whatsoever. So with that said, can we get a motion?
I'll make the motion. Um, I'll make the motion to, um, approve. Uh, application number. U P dash two one dash oh one. Uh, Board of Architectural Review, application number B A R dash two one dash oh six. Approval of a parking exception and residential design review for a two-story addition to existing one-story single-family. Dwelling located at sixteen forty-four Lexington Street.
Thank you, Commissioner Hahn. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Beth or Rick, I don't know who's gonna do the roll call on this.
I got it. Commissioner Dodson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wen?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva? What was that, Silva?
We can't hear you.
Uh, we can.
He's messing with us.
Oh, you can't hear me, really?
Oh, now we can.
How weird. Okay, I may need to replace my camera again.
So you're, you're an I, right?
I'm an I.
And I'm an I, Beth. So passes unanimously. Very good. Item D, discussions on returning to in-person meetings.
Alright, so this was requested at our last meeting by Dodson, so I think we want to have a little bit more. Of a discussion as to what our options are. Right now, we are solely virtual. We only have. An example of one other, uh. City council is doing, uh, mixed in-person. In-person typically for members of the public, uh, for the most part, staff is still. Operating from behind the scenes, they're not in the council chambers. They are also still doing that hybrid meeting Zoom and in-person. We can, uh, consider that. Also, opening up the possibility for City Hall to remain open during our meeting times. That way, if. You don't have suitable facilities at home to do this uninterrupted, you can come to City Hall. Uh, and set up anywhere there that you feel comfortable. So if we could just go, uh. Maybe one by one or however you want to conduct it Owens, to get people's opinions on. Returning to Zoom, also something that the city, I think, recently passed, although I'm not sure of how the implementation dates are changing. Is a vaccine mandate, but that's gonna be required of all employees and of all volunteers, contractors, et cetera. So that will be part of whether or not. Um, can be in the City Hall facilities if we return and have the commission in the future.
Very good. Okay, Commissioner Dodson, we'll let you go first.
Yeah, I was the one that brought this up and, uh. I, I especially feel this would be a good idea if we do get that max vaccine mandate. I, I, I feel that. That will address some of the concerns that, that, that may be out there. Uh, you know, over the last. Well, pretty much since the vaccines started, uh, taking wide hold, uh, the city has been coming back, the businesses and. Yeah. And some of the government institutions too. I, I feel that this is a time where we need to start making moves. To go back to the way it was. Uh, you know, uh, Zoom is fine. I mean, I, my. Last job, I, I did Zoom meetings for seven years, never had an onsite meeting. Uh, and it's, it's better for some things than others. I think for, uh, of maybe. A significant amount of what we do, Zoom is, is just fine, but I, I think we do lose something by not having that live element, especially when it's something of which. You know, people are going to be wanting to show up to talk about issues and, uh. There's, there's just more of an interactive, uh, aspect to the meeting when. It's live and there's people and you can see them and you can hear them. And there's, it, it, it's just lost in a Zoom environment. Uh, on top of that, there's my selfish interest in that, um, I'm able to better. Concentrate in meetings and also be better able to get to some meetings when. Uh, it's offsite, to be honest. I understand that that's not affecting. Uh, everybody may not be accepting, affecting anybody but me, but that's my social selfish reason for also advocating for this.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Dodson. How do you feel about this, Danny?
Me, um, I. I respect all the commission's opinions, you know? Uh, I can go hybrid either way, you know, whatever's comfortable. Because I know right now with COVID and stuff, you know? Some of the commissioners are, you know. Hesitant, some wants to be back in the city hall. You know, right now I feel it's kind of iffy, but whatever you guys decide, I'm off work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I, um, I think that. Commissioner Dodson's concerns are, are, are excellent ones and. As soon as we can go at least hybrid, I'm all for it. Um, I know I've, I didn't think that I would. Hold on to the, to the planning commission as a Zoom quite as. Positively as I have for me personally. You know, I have, I have space, I have. Convenience, it just, it just works for me. So the, the pros of being on Zoom that way, there's. There are negatives to it, as, as Keith had pointed out. So I, I, as long as it's a hybrid situation, I'm all for it. If we're gonna go back one hundred percent live, you know, I, I obviously I'll do it if that's what we do, but, um. I would prefer the hybrid option right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Silva?
I'm extremely flexible. Uh, I am vaccinated, but I also, um. Respect those both vaccinated and unvaccinated who, um. Reluctance, more underlying conditions that concern them, more, uh, desire to, um. Additional safety protocols, um, you know, I respect even those that, that have vaccine hesitancy. I don't have any issue. With, with any of that. Um, I personally am not afraid or concerned. About meeting in person and I am more than willing to do that if, if the other commissioners, uh, choose to. I also respect if there are commissioners that for health reasons or any other, um, uh, reservations. Um, like to wait longer. I, I do think that. I believe in the vaccine that is working for me, that I am willing to put myself out there and be, uh, in. Public and help being part of the, um, reparation of things as they used to be. And I think as commissioners, we have an opportunity to potentially set that example. Um, but I, I also get that it's not a one-size-fits-all and I certainly, uh, have no interest in, in. Any sort of politicization of the issue. Um, I, I am more than willing to meet in person. Um, and, um, uh, and I also am willing to respect the desires of all my other commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Silva. See, this is a hard one for me. I, um. I have health issues and so it worries me to be around people I don't know that. Not saying that I don't go out to dinner and stuff like that, but, uh. I'm one you always see with a mask on. I, um. Just the way I am, I don't wanna be around people I don't know. That's my biggest fear is that the people coming in, are they vaccinated? You know, that's the biggest fear. I, I just got my booster shot a couple of weeks ago, so I, I'm fully vaccinated, but. I do have fears of it, but if, if it's what the rest of the commission wants, especially as long as, um. The city can provide us with super sterile area for which to. Conduct the meeting. Um, I know that they have several people going through there and stuff, and so it'd mean cleaning it after one meeting before another meeting. Before the people come in would be my stipulation. I'd want to make sure it was. No bacteria and stuff on the place. But, uh, I'm for whatever you guys want to do, you know? Personally, I'm a little nervous going to anything with Thanksgiving coming and Christmas coming, because it seems like all the. All this different people come out at that time and don't act right for some, some reason, so. And it always seems to knock our numbers right back up, but, uh, like I said, if the rest of you want to go back to in-person meetings, um. I'm sure we can oblige with that.
Alright, I appreciate the input. I will reach out to the commissioners who are not here tonight to get their thoughts. Um, even if the commission decides to return to in-person meetings, it doesn't mean that it's going to happen ASAP. We'll work with the city clerk to see what can be accommodated and also if you do have an interest in. Using the space in City Hall during the meeting, uh, instead of being. At home or wherever you are able to connect to the meeting from, please contact me directly and we can see what we can arrange for you.
Very good.
So, of course, so tonight's not the vote to have in-person or hybrid or. Anything like that, right? Chair, chair ones?
I don't believe so, because I would like a, uh, definition of hybrid. Also says it's hybrid, so to me, like, well, I seen those hybrid cars and some of them weren't so good. But, uh, yeah, if we could just get a definition of what a hybrid meeting is, um. Like I said, uh, either way, I, I do, it's convenient here, you know, no doubt about it. You walk upstairs after dinner and turn your computer on.
And I have a question for you on that, on the hybrid. To what extent does that complicate thing, things for city staff that are running the meeting? Where you have some people there, you're gonna have to have a camera for them. Uh, then you're gonna have other people that are, that are coming in via Zoom and such, and then you gotta have them all. Being able to see each other and hear each other.
F? Did we lose Beth?
I'm here. Eyes and shine.
That was good.
I don't know why on my phone wasn't working, but I've been using it all medium. Can I on the computer? Audio might be a bit different and I'm now showing up as Dominique. I am still Beth Rock. Um, yeah, I think it would just be a little bit more work on the side of city staff to accommodate the in-person portion. Of that meeting, so that as a hybrid would mean that we would have some of you still at home. Some of you in the council chambers, some of the public in council chambers, some of the public from home. Uh, staff would likely not be in the council chambers, although dependent on the number of. People from the public there, that could change. If there's very little, you know. Members of the public joining us that night, we might feel more comfortable being in the chambers. That is discouraged for council meetings. Uh, just because they want to provide more space for public at that time. So it would take some work, but. Uh, with having experimented with the city council, um, I know they saw working out some kinks regarding audio visual. Um, but it's not impossible.
Okay, well, maybe we can look at that and, I mean, our next meeting's not until November, was it? Seventeenth?
I'm still trying to get a quorum for that date, but that is a possibility, yes.
Okay, so we have some time to figure it out. Or we make this next meeting a Zoom meeting and let them get everything set in place, because it sounds like it's gonna be quite a bit to, to get in place.
I know it's one of the reasons that the, the schools eventually decided to just go back to everybody in class. Because it was, they tried doing it hybrid last year and it didn't work. But then, yeah, obviously, schools are a different situation than us, but. there were some similar hardships.
Beth, could you possibly have, put both scenarios together as to how it'd work, the hybrid compared to just a standard safe, safe meeting?
Yeah, get input from Dominique, and maybe we have her back to make the presentation at our next meeting to where you could vote on it as a commission, and hopefully, we have everybody present.
Okay, that sounds good. Is that good for all the other commissioners? Very good. Okay, reports from commissioners?
I just had a quick question on the calendar. So I understood that the 24th of November was canceled, possibly a meeting on the 17th, but I didn't understand that we were necessarily not gonna have, I'm gonna get my calendar up here, a meeting on the 10th. So Beth?
Medina, did you have an item that you were gonna notice for the 10th or not?
We did, but that, that deadline's passed. So the only way we could do that is on the 17th, and we'd have to know by, well, next Tuesday would be our deadline to notice.
So as, as we sit right now-
There is not a meeting at the first meeting of November.
So as, as we sit here right now, the only meeting that we could have is on the 17th, and it's still, yeah.
Correct. If I get enough replies that there's gonna be a quorum, then we are gonna notice for the 17th.
Okay.
I'm, well, I don't want to put commissioners on the spot here, asking if-
Yeah, I don't remember anyways. I think I might have gotten two replies.
I, I said yes, I could be there.
I, I believe I said yes, too.
I said I didn't expect any conflict either.
So you got three, Beth. Just need a couple more.
I have no problem.
What was the date again?
Only one.
17.
17.
17. I think I'm, I think I'm available on the 17th, yeah.
Okay.
So we can make that happen. Very good. Okay, reports from commissioners?
I had a question on sign codes, but I didn't know if that was a question for Rick or Beth, so.
I have a question.
I think that's a question we can handle by email. And I would kind of like to move towards doing that for questions or even concerns with properties that we have to send us a direct email. Reports from commissioners is more intended as things that you want to share with each other and with staff about concerns with the city or upcoming projects with the city, things of general public interest.
Very good. Any other commissioners with the report?
Well, I, I have the question. I don't know if this is a sign code. Are signs required for commercial businesses in the business area? To say what the business is?
The only required signs that I think they need to have is more related to the safety, being able to locate them. So a fire department probably requires an address, internal signs like posting of the occupancy of the buildings required. But I don't believe the business is required to put up a sign.
Okay. And the reason I ask is there's the, the building right there on Fremont that used to be the, the glass shop, and, and now it's a big box, and there's no indication what it is. I assume it's a storage area for, for vehicles or something. It just, it just really looks odd in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm aware of questions and permits around that site by the owner. So I'll reach out and see what her next plans are, because she has been really improving the site. And I believe that a retail component was required on the ground floor. So I'll check in and see about that.
Okay.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay, since this isn't to, to do addresses or anything, I'm a grandpa.
All right. Congratulations.
That's the only report from this commissioner. So, okay, seeing nothing from commissioners, report from staff?
I don't have anything. Medina, do you have anything?
I don't know.
Okay, now we're gonna, no. Okay, very good. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Just don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, staff. Have a good day or night.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.